People, take a seat. This is our work session. And we're going to start with the Municipal Services Committee. Chairman Ebel.
Mayor, thank you. We are in the, yes, I mean, we are, is it working there? Municipal Services Committee is in this, in that business right now of trying to wrap up our year. It's been a busy year for us. We have, well, everybody sees the agenda, so we know it has been an extremely busy year. Laura and I talked, and she's going to do our year-end wrap-up tonight. And then we're going to put her reports on every six months. And the reason for that, if we keep her stuff on the quarter, we feel like we're going to be stepping on our toes. And there's still a lot of things that we need to do. There's a lot of work still yet to be done in the UDC on straightening it up and getting the contradictions out of it and those kinds of things. We've already done a whole lot of that, and I appreciate the council's patience on that. It's still a work in process, and you're still going to see quite a bit of that stuff coming before you. So Laura?
Okay, Ed said, you can see that the planning commission has been extremely busy for the past six months. The report that I've given you is from April of this year through just our meeting that we just had through September. In total, we've had two re-zones, two preliminary plats, eight final plats, six site plans, three replats to configure lots, whether they went from a one lot to a two lot or vice versa. And then we did have some amendments to the Unified Development Code. Then, as you see, we have a lot of variances. That is a big number on the variances. However, I think the amendments to the UDC that we made will cut the variances down drastically. Because as you see in the report, a lot of those variances were from driveway widths, as well as there was a few from fence heights. And then we had a couple for businesses asking for variance on metal facade. And then we had a few accessibility issues as well that we took care of the variances. And as you can see through it, we've got some, as I said again, planning commission has been extremely busy. We've got some final plats and preliminary plats for subdivisions, as well as parking complexes. We've had, again, we have, as everybody can see, drive their town. Freddy's has come to the cabin. They are moving extremely fast. So before we know it, they will be open. Again, we've had multiple subdivisions, whether it's been just a one lot or a two lot or a commercial subdivision coming into town. As you can see, on Highway 38, behind Hardee's in Big Red, the big mini-shorts has already broken ground. They've poured concrete. They're ready, they'll be up pretty quick as well. We've got another phase to the apartment complex on South Heinz Street. They've already started moving dirt on that side as well. I believe they'll be getting building permits before we even know that as well. And that's here again. It doesn't look like a law on paper, but I can tell you that the planning commission, we've had some of the biggest agendas the past few months that we've seen in a while, which means people are still building, which means businesses are coming to cabin. And I don't anticipate anything slowing down for a little while.
You know, one thing that we want to see, I think the council will agree, we want to see Municipal Services Committee. If it's not, then we need to know why, because there's an issue in town. And y'all are, and you're efficient with it, you get the job done and you move forward. But I really do appreciate the amount of organization that you've got in it whenever it comes to the council. It's there, it's well-put out, the questions are answered and move on. I also appreciate you for always answering your phone whenever I'm running or somebody calls to, to know and get it worked out then. It's my office stuff, it's all smooth at the table, I appreciate it. Has anybody got any questions or comments for Laura?
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that I try to give her more work to do, but she says we already got enough going on, but she does. And then you'll see council that I'm going to budget for her, another person in 2022. The department needs it, and we got way too much going on. So you will see that in the budget when we meet.
Well, that, that department grows and down-grows. You know, they, they are the, they're the heartbeat. And I appreciate everything that staff does down there. We've got, we've got a good staff, you're well-organized. Laura's got an iron hand, even though she's got a, you know, glove on it that covers that up, but she does a good job and I appreciate her. And also, she doesn't take any nonsense off the council leader, I appreciate that. Anybody else got anything at all? Laura, thank you, see you in June.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, appreciate you much. The next is our calendar for next year. Ben?
Yes, sir. If, when we had started this, we were going to just talk about some, the holidays in January, which the department's having to schedule bidding and whatnot. But we got to looking at it, and I think it worked very well. Last year, we managed to calendar all at once, all run, to talk about sort of that again. Mayor, before we look at January, I think you may have had a conflict with December Day. Is that, is that correct?
Apologies. In December, I said something in July, December 6th meeting, we need to move to December 13th. And I think everybody was okay with that then, but I don't know if that's still the same.
Yes, sir. I just think we're just in the meeting before, is everyone okay with moving to December 6th, December 13th?
Yeah, we, we have February 6th.
Looking ahead to, that should be our holiday conflict in December. Looking ahead to January, we do have, it's not a holiday technically, I think the city, Matthew might go to correct me, but I think the city celebrates 31st, the 1st, the Thursday or Friday before. So the 3rd is not a holiday, just putting it out there, February 1st can meet on January 1st. I don't know, most people will be off in the middle of the week before, I don't know how much we'll have for you, but it's completely up to you guys.
Let me ask the school board member, when, when does school come back after Christmas weekend? You don't know?
No, I'm a school board member.
Oh, you're not a school board member, you're a fourth school board member. Okay, so it won't conflict with that then.
I know exactly.
She knows exactly, she's got a calendar.
Well, what's, what's, does council have a preference on that? Would you prefer to keep the 3rd, would you prefer to meet the week after?
I'll let Maggie decide. I'll let Maggie decide.
I'm bound with the 3rd, I can't wait until it's over.
Okay. Anybody else, objections? Okay. What about the, the 17th is a city holiday, the city does celebrate the local payday on that day. Traditionally, we either do the next day, which should be the 17th, or the following Monday, which should be the 24th. Do we have preference as far as that goes?
24th.
Yes, sir. Everybody else kind of, do you know where we go with that, 24th?
I think it was our RFQ building for the internet, I think 24th would be there.
Yes, sir. Looking ahead to February, we have another one. Our traditional meeting on the 21st would be conflict about President's Day. So again, the city mayor prefers to do the next Tuesday, or 22nd, or the 20th.
I don't have a big preference. Maggie?
I'm bound with 22nd or the 20th. I'll wait until.
Then let's just do the 22nd, yes, sir. Mayor, we're also going to have dispersed in this, probably for the whole first quarter next year, be special meetings to take care of all kinds of different stuff, so, let's remember that.
So I don't think we hit a holiday conflict again. The 22nd of January is a planning commission day for?
For that, we move it to the Tuesday, that would be the Tuesday.
Okay. Nothing about that. Okay. So we might, we might have a, we have a slight, we have a slight conflict there. We can leave it for 22nd for now, or later, or our council.
I would say 28th. Is it real clear? That way, if council has action, or type of commission has action, council needs to consider, we, we can hit it pretty quick.
And Ed says we can always do a special meeting prior.
Right.
As far as holidays goes, that brings us to July. And Monday, July 4th is obviously a holiday. So would this council have a preference between the 5th or the 11th?
Yeah, the 11th.
Is there general agreement on that? And, takes us to Labor Day. I believe this is the last conflict. Labor Day, it's going to be celebrated on the 5th. Does council have a preference between the 6th or the 12th?
That may, that may be your mayor, probably 12th would be okay, I'm not even.
Is that more for everybody? Matt, we got a special meeting, we got, we just want. All right, we walked up now to 12. And I think that is the only holiday, the only holiday conflict we have. You know, it's changed if we need to in the future, but we'll help. Department has, we're going to, it's going to happen. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor, when you get that wrapped up and make sure there's no other conflicts, would you send an email to everybody? Thank you. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. The next is property acquisition. Mayor?
Okay, what I was going to do with this as well is kind of get everybody to update where we are on our bond projects. I had several council members ask me, so I thought this would be a good time to let everybody know. Property acquisition, as it pertains to the franchise tax bond, the bond closed last Thursday, October 28th. Our funds are available with the trustee, US Bank as the trustee. First Security, US Bank is the one for sales tax. First Security is the one for franchise tax. So we have all the contracts signed for 805 and 905 Main Street. So we should be getting that closed in the next 30 days. Moving on to the sales tax bonds, Sportsplex Splashpad, I know Parks and Rec is on committee meeting this evening. We're working with them, looking, waiting for surveys as well to determine our final location, that we'd like the complex to be at. We're also concerned about the shooting range, we've got to move it if we, if we do something out at the park location. I know the turf and Wade Pool, Travis is still getting quotes on the turf, fineizing that, and the Wade Pool, I believe is in design right now. Police and Fire Training, shooting range location is the big deal on that. And then, of course, wedding parks location for their event, because that's going to determine where we put police and fire. Community Animal Support Services and Food Patriot, we've hired an architect, plans are being generated, looks like a six to eight month design to construction start. Should, and I said earlier, with franchise, we should close the property by the end of the year. Tournament of Silence, locations have been duly determined, awaiting two leading order agreements. We're writing specs and expect to advertise for the bids in two weeks. The internet RFQ went out last weekend, so this past Sunday was their second week to run. We're giving them until January 4th or 5th to turn in their RFQs. And that's when we'll give those to the council via our ordinance for the four council members that get to write them, as well as myself, Plating Commission, no, I'm sorry, myself, Public Works, and I believe Brown Murrows. Our streets and drainage, that's in design, so we're waiting on that. And then our fire truck, we'll finish up the bids on that. We also have the opportunity, out of our park complex, to buy close to 100 acres for a million dollars. It's going to be right above where we own the park property. Our parks are 300 something acres that we own, and that's where the road's going to come to the side of it, right through it. So more details that follow on that, we're working with parks on how we want to structure that transaction. And we may bifurcate it, where police and fire take some of it, parks take some of it, so we can get the gun range relocated. But that's your major deal. So we have a lot of things up in the air, and once you change one thing, it changes a whole bunch of things. So we work on it every day, and it seems like we have a new plan every two days of what we're going to do, but we've gotten some good stuff out of it. But that's kind of where we're at, and I would welcome the questions that you might have.
Do we have a prospective property for the Parks and Rec, for the special use building, the multi-bond?
Yeah, that's what we're working on about, we're going to put it, we have three different wish lists and locations. And we have a number one, number two, and a number three. And they really want number one. And I think they met on that tonight, so we don't know the contingencies of, if we get one, what that does to two, how does that affect the other? So we're working through that together, and I want them to, their commission to propose what they want, and then we'll bring it to council. But I think we're close. People are shaking their head back there.
Very good. Any other questions from anybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that concludes Municipal Services. Mayor?
Now, Budget Personnel Committee, Chairman Matt Weber.
I don't have anything specifically for the agenda tonight, but in speaking with Ms. Annie and the mayor about their proposed budget for 2022, looks like they'll have something for us close to Thanksgiving. So what I would like to do is to call Budget and Personnel Committee meeting for the 29th of November. That would be for the committee, it would be an open meeting, so anybody could attend. And I'll invite the department heads to come to that. We'll have our initial discussion, and again, any council member, the public's open to attend as well. Then we'll probably have a full discussion for the full council at the work session on December 13th. And depending on what comes from that, if we roll it on into the next meeting that night, or if we wait until the 20th, we'll wait and see. But as of right now, tentative, it looks like we're going to have that committee meeting on November the 29th, 6:00 PM. I'm not sure if this room is available, but we'll get with Mr. Travis. We'll see. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Police and Fire, Chairman Jay Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have any scheduled agenda items for police and fire, although there is a section under community input that I think you would like to make announcements.
Thanks, sir. I'm sorry, any questions on budget or police and fire? Roger, did we have any? Okay. Next up, Community Development, Chairman Ebel.
Mayor, your item three covered this item, and I appreciate you giving that report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for anyone in the audience? C9, Roger. Next up, Military Affairs Committee, Chairman Ron Wayman.
We have none, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions regarding the military debate? C9, E, Roger, do you have? Okay, now we go into General Community Input. Is there any input you'd like to address to the mayor and council? We would love to hear it. Please come to the podium, state your name, any business, to let us know if you live in Canada or not. If you don't have any, I'll go into my announcement. I'm going to walk around. I need Anthony's phone, my phone's not working. It was my great pleasure tonight to announce our new fire chief, Chad Lorre, and his wife, Tina. Come on up. As soon as we take a break, y'all can come up and say hi, or what have you made, or talk to me after this. So we'll have a break after this, let everyone use the restroom, and then we'll get started in the council meeting. But a little bit about Chad, I sent this to the paper and to all the people at the City Hall. Chad got his Bachelor of Science Socialities degree from UCA. He served as a Sergeant First Class in the United States Army for 22 years. Served as combat engineer, conducted LED drop clearance, assisted in a platoon with 38 service during combat missions. Completed leadership training, received Combat Services Award, 2 Bronze Star, 3 Army Achievement medals, meritorious service, overseas service, Gulf of War on terror, NATO service, Army service, National Defense, Squad Leader of the Year. Wow. He's going to beat my bodyguard if I ever need one. Next, as he serves as captain in the Captain Fire Department, and he's been here for the last nine years, and everyone knows all the many things that our blessed fire department does here in campus, so I'm going to read some of the things from that. But we're real proud to have him, and thank you so much for accepting and for coming to be Fire Chief, so congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, if y'all want to sit over here or stand up, we're going to take a break, if anyone wants to come up and see you. Any other general comments before we adjourn and take a five-minute break? C9, can I get a motion?
Thank you, ma'am.
I got a motion from Matt, and a second from Steven. All in favor, say aye. Adjourned 6:52. We'll come back in a second. You may be seated. Roll call, please, Tammy.
Long.
Here.
Jones.
Red.
Here.
Gillingford.
Here.
Coe.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Wayman.
Here.
Seven present, one absent. Now we're going to go into fun stuff. This is, we're going to have a mayor presentation, as well as a state senator presentation, as well as a, I always want to say Republican. Republican Representative Brian Evans presentation. So let me head that away. We're going to be honoring Ms. Berkeley Turner. Can she come on up? Okay. We've got to be front and center here. Aren't you pretty good? Well, I'm going to start, I'm pretty, one of these guys go first. Do you care? All right, I'll go first. Whereas Ms. Berkeley Turner started playing golf at five years old, Berkeley has a skillset far beyond her years. And Berkeley, her parents picked cabin as their home, so that Berkeley can one day play golf with the golf, cabin golf team, and hopes to play for the Arkansas Razorbacks golf team in college. And Berkeley was ranked number 26 in junior girls from the Arkansas State Golf Association at the age of eight. And on October 2nd, Ms. Berkeley qualified to advance to the Augusta National Golf Tournament, better known as the Masters, the day after Ms. Berkeley turned out. Wow, little tiger over here. Ms. Berkeley Turner is known for her winning spirit, her amazing talents, and her love of Supergirl. She has made her parents' friends and the city cabin very proud. So therefore, I King Kincaid, as mayor of Cabin, do hereby recognize November 1st today, 2021, as Berkeley Turner Day. Well, congratulations. See what I got here. Here, I got a mayor calling for you. That's a big ball marker, isn't it? All right, which one do you choose next? Okay, this is Representative Brian Evans.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, it's, it's quite an exciting time to think of what the future is ahead for golf, for Cabot High School, and for hopefully the Arkansas Razorbacks. I have a proclamation from the Arkansas House of Representatives, and I want to present to Berkeley. Says, "Congratulations on winning the girls 7 through 9 drop ship and regional qualifier at the Alotion. I was elated to hear that you, a resident of Cabin, was recognized for your skills at this event and will advance to Augusta National Golf Club next April. I know that golf requires a lot of practice and dedication. Your family must be very proud of your accomplishment. I was happy to read that you want to play golf in the Arkansas Razorbacks from your older, and hope that you continue to follow your dreams. Again, congratulations on this wonderful achievement. Please do not hesitate to call me if I can give assistance or give you any golf lessons." Sincerely, Brian Evans, state representative. Now, we have invited a special guest tonight, it's going to be a surprise. It was all confirmed, and at the last minute, there was a schedule conflict that came up. Speaking of the Arkansas Razorbacks, we have another one. Dear Berkeley, I would like to offer my sincere congratulations on your recent qualification for the drop ship and putt national finals at Augusta National Golf Club. Your outstanding leg in the girls 7 through 9 qualifier at the Alotion earlier this month was actually awarded. I enjoyed reading about your early introduction to golf and reading your comments in your mentor, an Arkansas golf hall theme inductee, Don Darby. She talked about your love of the game and your commitment to learning. I was especially excited to hear that your favorite golfers include current former Razorback, Maria Fossey, Gabby Lopez, and Brooke Maggers. They are tremendous role models for you to emulate your path to your dreams. On behalf of Razorbacks everywhere, I want to wish you the very best of luck in national finals. Most of all, I want to take a moment to applaud you for your commitment and dedication to be the very best you can be in golf, and also in life. Continued best wishes to you and your family, and go all. Sincerely, Hunter and Rich Ed, Director of Athletics. And I also want to present you with a Arkansas State flag that flew over the Capitol on October the 19th in honor of Berkeley Turner Day. Congratulations.
Wow, thank you, Representative Evans. Now, Berkeley, I had a chance to meet you at Cabin Fest, remember that? Now, would you tell me what it feels like to have Berkeley Turner Day in Cabin?
It feels really amazing.
I had it all. So what is amazing about it?
It is amazing to feel the feeling that you just, this far ahead.
That is awesome, and I am proud that they named it Berkeley Turner Day. Thank you for that, Mayor. That's a great accomplishment. I want to read this to you, and I've got a little gift for you, too. I don't have a letter from the, that's the director, the universal article. This is going to go downhill from here, okay? We'll make fun of it. It says, "This is from myself. It says, 'Dear Berkeley, I would like to take this opportunity to offer you my warmest congratulations for winning the girls 7 to 9 drop ship and putt regional qualifier at the Alotion Club in Robin, Arkansas. This is a wonderful accomplishment and a testament to your hard work and dedication to the sport of golf. You have demonstrated excellence as a young golfer and your skilled talent in the sport of golf.'" You have, okay, my glasses are, they're doubles in there. Okay. "I have no doubt you have learned important lessons and skills through your experience that will help you shape the rest of your life. You are an encouragement to me, and I am thrilled to see you excel. I have every confidence that your future is bright. With our fans like you leading the way in our nation and our world, we'll be in good hands in the future. Again, congratulations on attaining such an outstanding achievement, and best of luck in your future endeavors. It is an honor to serve as your state senator, Ricky Hill." And on top of that, since you've got all these other things, from the Arkansas State Senate... we have a special coin for you. And this tells about the inaugural Arkansas State Senate Coin in the history of it. And so congratulations to you. See, my coin has a little special wrapper on it. Mayor, if you have that. So, so it's not only that from Hunter Yurchuk either, but it is the title, okay? Congratulations, and thank you for that. Now, tell me one of the life, life lessons you've learned in golf. What's something you think you're gonna carry on with you for the rest of your life?
Just being a part of this, basically. It's just so fun to do it, and I just love it.
Now, does anyone else in your family play golf?
No, sorry.
Wow, that's extra special. There are no other family members who do this. Congratulations, and we look forward to coming back up here and hopefully giving you a Senate citation if you can go win this thing, okay? That'd be really special. So thank you very much. Is there anything you wanna say, everyone, before we leave?
Sorry. I'd like to thank my mom and dad, and thank the senator and the state representative for recognizing me today, and...
That is awesome. But I want to say, well, your grandma and your grandfather are here, aren't they? And just for Cabot being an Air Force member, I was talking to him for a day. He's a former Air Force member back here, or grandfather is. So we'd like to say thank you for your service to this great country that we live in. So thank y'all, everybody. Hey, what I love you. Alright, let me put that down, man. Alright, we're gonna get a putter, or a driver, or a wedge or something, so you can kinda show off stuff up here, right? But this isn't seventy-nine, Jimmy Fallon or anything. So, uh, we're not gonna do that. So, uh, me and Senator and Representative were talking, and you know, we're gonna be kinda jealous here because we're meeting a little celebrity, right? You're like a celebrity, right? You have your own day now. You're great at golf. You're gonna represent Arkansas and Augusta. So here's what we want. We gave you a bunch of gifts. I got three golf balls right here. I have a sharpie. We each want your autograph. Okay, we get it? I'm gonna let you go sit down and do it, so you can take your time. There's three nice brand new golf balls. And if you mess up one, he gets... I get to go. Congratulations.
That's the mayor on the left, he's got a suit, left side.
Is that your driver? That's nice. Can I borrow it? What rig is that? Okay, mini B. Okay, next up, read ordinances and resolutions by title only. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
I second.
I got a motion from James, a second by Ray, and read ordinances and resolutions by title only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy.
Long.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Hillenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Uh, next item, City Council, old business. We have two items tonight. Uh, first is ordinance number thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-one, taking.
Ordinance number thirty-eight of twenty twenty-one, and ordinance to amend ordinance thirty-one of twenty nineteen, and for other purposes, second reading.
If I remember, instructions are we're gonna have all three readings. Is that correct, councilman?
I think that's what Matt requested on, on his, which that one is, I'm going to request a different on this one.
Okay, yes, sir. Uh, seeing no further action. Next, uh, ordinance, ordinance number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-one.
Number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance to repeal certain sections of the Code of Cabot, to amend certain sections of the Unified Development Code, and for other purposes, second reading.
Mayor, since this came originated in the Plan Commission, they had public hearing on it, and this is the second time this has been before us, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the third reading, please.
Second. I got a motion from Ed, second from Stephen, to suspend third reading of ordinance number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Hillenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-one. I'm not gonna ask for the emergency on it though, but I would like to adopt it tonight so that the municipal service can start working on it.
Yes, I second. Got a motion to adopt, and a second from James Reed, motion from Ed, to adopt ordinance number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-one. Any discussion? Seeing none, any discussion with the audience? Seeing none, any from Facebook, YouTube link, seeing none. Okay, all in favor, roll call, please, Tammy.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Hillenberg.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Next item, City Council, new business. I would have any, council, do you have any you'd like to present? Seeing none, community input. Anyone like to address the mayor and the council? They do so at the microphone. State your name, business, and if you live in Canton. Seeing none, wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, it was a great meeting. It was good to, uh, be here for Ms. Berkeley. And, uh, uh, it's good to see her smiling face. Good luck to you, Ms. Berkeley. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, maybe.
Second.
I got a motion from Ed, second from Matt, all in favor.
Alright.
Adjourn seven seventeen.